Okay, I see it's 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2025 meeting. We're going to be playing a zoning commission to order. Those who are able, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on my behalf, and equal rights and justice for all.
We'll do a commission check-in. Any seen any alternates? My name's Mark Lott. I'm the commission chair, starting at my far right.
Eric Lukingbeal, member.
Meg Jabeley, alternate.
Eric Myers, vice chair.
Bob Levitt, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brennan Shaheenan, member.
Okay, Commissioner Kane is not checking in today, so Meg will be sitting in. Next on the agenda is public session. Does anyone in the public wish to speak to the commission on a planning zoning matter not on our agenda or a public hearing? Please come forward. Don't see any Zoom participants today. No public session. We'll close that item. Next, we'll move on to action of the minutes from March the 25th. I took a look in the public voting meeting. Any comments or motion?
Move to approve the minutes of March 25th.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Aye.
One abstention from Meg. Otherwise, the minutes carry. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for a special permit for detached accessory apartment. Vice Chair Myers, could you please read the call to the hearing?
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road, to hear and consider the following item. Applications seeking a special permit under zoning regulations Section 8.5.2 and 8.5.3 for a detached accessory apartment in excess of 1,200 square feet for property located at 198R Salmon Brook Street, CE Zone, file Z-4-25. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
Thank you. Is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes. Good evening. And for the record, Attorney Andrea Malanson, I'm representing the applicant, Mr. Bogley, who's also present here this evening. Just one point of clarification. The initial petition was for an accessory, a detached accessory building that was in excess of 1,200 feet, but now it's been modified, I believe via email, to be less than 1,200 feet. The plan on file is for 1,020 feet. And as I understand it, there is no need for an additional notice in connection with that, so I believe the notice that was published was sufficient for that?
That's correct. Ms. Kane gave me the information, and since we're going lower, the hearing notice should suffice, so we can continue.
Excellent, thank you. So, and in connection with this, Mr. Bogley is here to answer any questions. There is a bit of history. This is the property that has the Mapleview Farm located on it, also has the Farm Brewery. Some of you may be familiar with that. In 2003, that was initially when the dwelling was built, the house that exists on the property. And that's been a farm that's been in existence for about 75 years. Mr. Bogley is the grandson of that, so it's really a family property and a family farm. In 2004, there had been a special permit that had been issued in connection with an accessory building. And it was, actually, it was recorded in the land records. I've done a title search on the property. And that special permit specifically provided that if the construction did not commence within one year, the permit would be null and void. Now, that accessory building was never constructed. Mr. Bogley is here to testify to that, if you need additional evidence. But one of the things that was submitted, and I'm hoping the committee has a copy of it, is a letter from Sandra Bogley. She had been, she's the mother of Mr. Bogley. And that letter indicated that was going to be an in-law accessory building for them, and they chose not to do anything with it. So it was never constructed. There is, so how we view it, just per the terms of the special permit, is that is null and void, and there is no accessory building in connection with this particular property.
If this asked since we're on that subject, would you be willing on the record, if we approve it, just to make sure it's clear? It says our regulations only allow one. Since I haven't been to the property, would you be okay if we, on the record in our motion, rescinded this permit and replaced it with a new one if we approve it?
Yes, and I believe that would be fine to rescind it. It's kind of a duplicative motion because it's null and void, but you want to make sure physically there's nothing there. But yes, that should be rescinded. In fact, we would agree that it should be rescinded right now on the record.
Okay, because there's no apartment on the property.
There's absolutely no apartment on the property.
Thank you.
So what was subsequently built in 2012 was a barn. And so that's on the property, and you can see from the aerial views that were provided to you. It's separate on the property, and it's already existing. In that barn, in 2019, a special permit was issued in connection with a farm store and Farm Brewery. And that's where the farm, that's where the brewery had been, in that. And that's where we're proposing the accessory apartment should be. It's just to modify those plans. And so in 2019, there had been the special permit for the Farm Brewery. In 2022, it was amended. There was another special permit that was issued, and the difference between that and the 2019 is that it allowed for the sale of Connecticut liquor as well, in addition to the brew, the beer that was being brewed. And so this is just an application to have an attached, detached dwelling. I'm sorry, detached dwelling is an accessory building for an apartment. One of the purposes is, as you know, with the farming industries, you have to come up with innovative ways to try to keep the income coming in the farm, to keep the farm open and going. And this is one of the things that they thought would be a great use, is to have an apartment building, to be able to have that income stream as well, to keep the farm going. It's private. As you can see, there's plenty of space. There's ingress egress, don't have to worry about emergency vehicles coming in. It actually is a little bit less invasive to the community. I shouldn't say invasive. I was at the brewery many times. It's a beautiful location, but sometimes I'm sure the neighbors might have thought music might have been too loud, even though others enjoyed it. But this is something where it's even less than what the current permit allows for as far as activities go, so it would not be intrusive at all to the neighbors. And it would be a wonderful way of trying to continue to improve the property, to keep the farm going, and using it in different ways. So we're requesting that there be, that you allow that. And once again, because it is a detached building, it is up to the discretion of the zoning board to be able to approve that. And I'm not sure if you wanted anything else from Mr. Bogley. He's also here today. He's, as I said, he's the grants, and he's very familiar with this property. He's grown up here and has lived there his whole life, and he's present as well, so.
I just have one other question, and thank you for going through the background history. Just again, to make sure it clear that this, the structure would be just an accessory apartment. There's no more farm store in that building. It's just going to be the apartment, correct?
Correct. And in addition, we had given the plans initially, it's a two-story building. Initially, it was going to be two floors, but we found that cost prohibitive at this point. So solely, that's why it went down below the 1,200. It's solely the first floor. The apartment takes up the whole use, so you can no longer, if it's approved as an accessory detached building, it can't be used as a farm shop or brewery at the same time.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to make sure since it's down there.
It's that same space, yes.
To have something upstairs.
Yes.
It's just all, the building's going to be dedicated to the apartment, whether you use the upstairs or not at the bottom.
Correct, correct. Now, we don't, we don't want to lose the special permit right now, just in case you don't approve the attached building. But clearly, the two can't be done at the same time. It's that space that's being used. And I don't know if you want anything from Mr. Bogley as well, but...
I don't have any questions. He's welcome, of course, to add anything he wants to. That's the commission.
All set, okay. All right.
Open up for questions from the commission. Abby, staff side, is everything else from our accessory apartment, from the plans you've seen? Everything looks, so far, in accordance with the regulations? Obviously, they have to go through the building official for permits and...
Yep. Yeah, so it does, again, have kitchen, bathroom, sleeping area, so that complies with the special permit criteria in 8.5. Then the commission is also to consider Section 8.2, which is the typical special permit criteria, you know, neighborhood compatibility, environmental compatibility, et cetera. And I don't see any issues with that.
Just looking through. Again, since the farm store's not going to be operated in there, I don't see any conflict there.
I mean, isn't the farm store towards the front, and then this is where the brewery would be, right? Like, it replaces the brewery?
It replaces the brewery. The brewery was also, so the farm store is on 192.
Yeah.
And so the brewery itself, when we did the special permits, it's considered a farm store slash brewery, because there are also items that were sold in there as well. So that's where confusion can come in as well.
I'm thinking of the right building, the brewery, right?
Yes, so it's the brewery slash farm store.
Different than what's on 192.
Got it, yep, correct.
You, 10 and 202.
Well, I meant number 192.
Oh, okay. I always go by the number.
192 Salmon Brook, and this is 198R Salmon Brook, yes.
I didn't have any other questions, so do you have anything else with that?
Nothing else. No?
So I'll open. If there's any member of the public that'd like to speak, please come forward. Please introduce yourself and your address, please.
Hi there, my name is Kristen Roach. I live at 198 Salmon Brook Street, and I just want to speak out in favor of this permit for the accessory apartment. The barn is right behind my home. There's really, really tall, dews of trees there that block the view, so I think it'd be fantastic to have them maintain that space as rural and pretty. And like she said, it will be probably slightly quieter than when they had live music there several days a week, so I'm all for it.
Thank you. I don't see anyone on Zoom today. Seems to me that we allow less traffic, you know, with an apartment as opposed to a brewery. And then all the park areas, meets that I mentioned. Yeah. Anything else you'd like to add before we close?
Nothing further.
Okay. The commission's due? All set, okay. Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing. The commission has up to 65 days to make its decision, but we will be discussing it later on the agenda today, as you'll know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is item seven, receive applications and schedule public hearings. Abby, I see we have two that were on the agenda. You want us to go through those?
Yes. The first is an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations Section 3.8.2.1 for a caretaker apartment for 516 Salmon Brook Street. This is maximum tree service. They're looking to add a residential use there for the property owner. And the second is an application seeking a site plan modification to add a playground for property located at 160 Granville Road. This is Valley Brook Community Church. If the commission is in agreement, the caretaker apartment could be scheduled for hearing at our next meeting on May 13th. The 160 Granville Road, that one does need wetlands approval, and they don't meet until May 22nd, so that would put the public hearing on May 27th for that one.
Just to clarify, site plans don't require hearing, but I did talk to Abby, and are usual practices to have a public hearing for those, so I put that on the list for a public hearing, so. It's the commission objection with that, right? I'm good with those dates if...
Okay.
All right, so we'll do both meetings in May. All right, next on our agenda is item eight, consideration of applications. We concluded the hearing. We just concluded the one hearing today for the accessory apartment at 198R Salmon Brook. I think it meets the criteria. Staff says it does, and we did get the clarification that there's no apartment on the property, and the permit will be rescinded, and there will be no farm store in that building, the brewery. So I think it meets the criteria. Another discussion?
Just a point of clarification. The special permits, they constantly run with land, so all of the permits that were issued previous to this application will stay with this barn, correct?
Everything except the, except the one for the other accessory apartment.
In 2004.
Yeah, that one, we're just, there was the possibility that it's already null and void, but we're making sure the applicant on the record said that they're willing for us to take that, revoke that, send that, whatever it is that goes.
All right, thank you.
But yeah, you're right, Brennan, the other ones would still be valid.
All right.
Great, Abby?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So a quick, couple of clarifications on a proposed motion I may have in my hand here. I had heard the applicant state the proposal is for a 1,020 square foot apartment.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good question. So the email had stated 1,040 square feet, based on the dimension of 26 by 40.
So I don't see the harm in leaving it at 140.
Mm-hmm, a little bit larger, just in case, yeah. And I think the key point is that it's under the 1,200 square feet, too. So it's intended just to be the first floor of the existing structure that was previously used as the Farm Brewery.
So probably if there's a measurement error here, probably good to err on the side of the 40.
Yep.
Okay, and then, you know, we have some call-outs here for there being one accessory apartment, and as calling out that the previous special permit for an apartment is null and void, but also should we spell out that the approval, approved farm store brewery at the location to be used for the apartment cannot operate at the same location? Or do we need to call that out?
In the existing structure.
Yeah. As the accessory apartment.
Yeah.
Obviously, if it's no longer an apartment, it could be...
It could go back, right?
Because if they wanted to operate the Farm Brewery at a different location on the property, they'd have to come back to us for a site plan.
Correct.
But if the apartment ceased, they could go right back to running at the current location.
Correct, because that, the special permit runs with the land unless an owner intentionally abandons it and states so.
Any other considerations come to mind, anybody?
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
My motion, we approve an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations Section 8.5.2 for a detached accessory apartment approximately 1,040 square feet in size as proposed and as outlined in the application file, subject to the following. There shall only be one accessory apartment on the property. As stated by the applicant on the record, there is not currently an accessory apartment on the property, and the special permit for an accessory apartment recorded in volume 308, page 964 of the Granby Land Records, is null and void. The permit approved, the approved farm store brewery at the location to be used for the apartment cannot operate in the same structure as the apartment.
Take a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Motion carries. So next on our agenda is update on the BFG Planning and the Granby Center Advisory Committee.
Great. And I invite Meg and Eric to jump in at any time. So I thought it would be helpful to provide kind of a quick overview of where the committee is to date with BFJ planning on the Granby Center Master Plan. So I pulled out, I thought, were some key highlights from their work and pulled them into a memo for the commission's review. So I'll walk through it, and if anyone has any questions, please go ahead and interrupt. So just to kind of frame and ground where we are, as adopted by the committee, the goal of this study is to create a framework that supports a connected, healthy, vibrant, and resilient center for business, residents, and visitors that aligns with Granby's plan of conservation and development. So that's really been the guiding goal and principle of this work, that is really, all the recommendations and strategies are intended to feed back into that and support that overall vision and goal for the center. So on page two of the memo, you can see, and again, this is all, I want to highlight draft. The committee is still working on this with BFJ. There's still, you know, public input to be had, so again, this is draft, just work to date. So you can see the existing Granby Center zones, and then the proposed Granby Center zone. So the yellow there is the existing center edge, the blue is a center common, and the purplish pink is the commercial center zone. BFJ is proposing one larger Granby Center zone, and how I look at that is essentially an expansion of the COCE zone with some modifications. So you can see basically all the properties that are currently COCE zone, so that pink and the purple will, would still remain in the Granby Center zone. And then it's pulling in the center edge property at 254 Salmon Brook Street, and then some of the center common zone on the west side of Salmon Brook, and then the north side of East Granby Road. So again, that's intended to be the commercial core of the area, if you will. Moving down, you can see what the proposed Granby Center zones, the permitted uses and special permit, special permit uses would be. And again, BFJ isn't proposing any new uses necessarily. It's basically taking some of the special permit uses and asking that the committee consider some of them to be moved into the permitted use category. One thing that would change is they would remove single-family uses as a permitted use, and again, that's really what the intent of making this the commercial core of town. And with that would come the removal of associated uses, you know, accessory apartments, family childcare homes, and then also looking at where B&amp;B and Inns could be allowed. So on the backside of that, maybe that's a little bit clearer. You can see the COCE current regulations, and then the proposed Granby Center zone. So you can see which uses are permitted by right currently. And again, there's only two, the business or professional offices and restaurant limited seating that are allowed by right. Everything else is by special permit, and you can kind of see the differences there. So looking to make retail sales, mixed-use buildings, multifamily, banks, personal services, retail sales of alcoholic beverages, and then also pulling in government buildings and facilities as permitted uses versus special permit. This is something that the committee has talked a lot about a great deal. I anticipate there will be further discussion. And certainly, ultimately, it is the Planning and Zoning Commission that would make any sort of considerations for zoning regulation changes. So again, the very beginning of this conversation. Any questions with uses or the zones? Meg or Eric, do you want to add anything?
Just to call out that fueling stations for motor vehicles, you'll see that there's an X for saying that doesn't need to be allowed all the time.
Yes, that's a good point. So the two gas stations that are currently allowed in the center would become legally non-conforming uses, and no additional gas stations could be approved in the center under this draft.
And some of that is from public input as well, saying we don't need more gas stations in the center.
So if they were to go out and someone wanted to put one in, would it still be allowed? Or would they be, have to convert to something else?
No, so same property, the use could continue, yep.
Like if Cumberland was out, another gas station would come in.
Okay. Yep.
What about a, for a car that doesn't need gasoline?
Like electric.
Electric cars, could that allow them? We don't know.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
I'll put a no.
Right, because I'm sure you're going to start to see stations that are more of the electric vehicle charging stops, if you will.
I think the plan is to be combined. You'd add them to the existing gas stations. You know, hydrogen or whatever's going to come out. Right, the nucider, whatever.
Yeah, we can ask BFJ.
That's a great point, yeah.
So I want to emphasize what Abby pointed out. I think the overall shape of the COCE, as well as the permitted uses, special permit uses, would come before us for discussion. I don't think that we've reached, I know we have not reached consensus of the boundaries of this new proposed concept of a COCE and the uses.
Abby, you said that, or it's Meg and Eric, too, we're not going to allow single-family use?
Well, that would be a new single-family house.
A new single-family.
Couldn't be built. But if you had an existing single-family house...
Correct.
You could stay there, and you could sell it to somebody else who wanted to use it.
Correct, yep.
It's, I know, I just want to make that clear to everybody. It's not saying that you can't continue using it because they're all grandfathered.
Correct.
Because they're existing.
Yep.
Property is.
Yes, the properties, yep. Yeah, and really, again, the, the thinking with that is if this is moving more commercial, trying to minimize conflict, so not allow additional single-family, where there could be some tension there between more intensive commercial uses.
If a single-family owner wanted to put an accessory apartment on, would that be allowed?
I would say yes. Yeah.
Because then it becomes a multifamily, which is permitted use.
Well, that's a good point. You could look at it either way, right?
There's multifamily, and then there's owner occupied with an accessory apartment. That's true, yeah.
They could even have a business.
Yeah.
Be mixed use.
So looking at the proposed bulk and area standards, so again, using the commercial center as the, as a starting point, you can see, again, no changes with the minimum front yard. It would still be 25 feet in the proposed new zone. It is interesting that they are considering a maximum front yard. So in other words, that's to try to keep the building a little bit closer to the road, so a building would have to be located between 25 and 30 feet to, and that would allow, you know, some sidewalk space, maybe outdoor dining within that buffer, and have parking basically to the rear of a building to try and create a nice streetscape. So that's the intent of that. Minimum side and minimum rear yards, again, no change there, 10 and 20 feet. There is a provision that if a budding, a residential zone, a 20-foot side yard would be required, and a 30-foot rear yard. And those are the existing setbacks required in the center common zone. So I think this strikes a nice balance, because when you look at the expansion of this zone and pulling in CC properties into this new zone, basically those existing setbacks would be unchanged despite the zone change, because those abut, for a large part, residential zones anyway. So you would still have those required side and rear yard setbacks as they currently exist. The maximum building height, again, keeping it as three stories or 45 feet, which is the current regulation. They do have a call-out there for potentially 48 feet for mixed use, and this would be to allow a taller first story for a retail use or a commercial use, so to get an increased ceiling height there, which is more desirable for those types of uses. Again, no change for maximum building footprint. They are looking at increasing the lot coverage from 30 to 40 percent, and the lot coverage is just the percent of the lot covered by rooftops, basically, so it doesn't speak to parking or impervious coverage, just the roof. Looking at a decrease in the minimum lot area from 20,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet. I know some committee members have questions about that, and, you know, what that would allow and what that would look like, so I anticipate BFJ will be clarifying that. Looking at, again, for multifamily uses, in order to allow them, it would be whatever is required lot area-wise in that zone, so it would be 15,000 square feet. For the maximum density for multifamily, it's currently 15 units per acre, keeping it as 15 units per acre, with a provision that there could be a density bonus for a property unit to grant easements for sidewalks, roads, additional public open space. And this is intended to try and create a better connected center area, and thinking that, you know, a lot of it is privately owned, and so it will require cooperation from private property owners to kind of have, you know, a network of internal sidewalks and walkways to allow people to traverse across properties and not go out onto a main road, so it's just trying to incentivize that. And then again, a minimum lot frontage, slight reduction from 100 feet to 75 feet for any new lots. Looking at parking requirements, that also has been talked a lot by the committee. It was, I know it came up... It was, I know it came up during the public workshop. I anticipate there'll be further discussion on parking requirements. They are showing reductions in multifamily for one-bed, two-bed, three and four. And then looking at revisions for our commercial office, medical office, retail stores, shopping centers, and auto showrooms. So I think that is certainly going to be something that the committee is going to have to look at in more detail to see what what makes sense, especially in our center area. We all want to make sure that there's enough parking, but we also balance out with creating a vibrant, connected center area. So that's not easy to figure out, but this is at least a starting point.
And they're kind of basing it off of what standard generally in other similar towns.
I think that sounds the way though, I get to not get to the committee, but I guess they're counting a lot on the walkability from some of the new.
They are.
Because, you know, we're still not a public train, you know, we're still going to have residents. And hopefully, instead of us driving to Southwick, people drive here from Southwick, and then they need a place to park.
Yeah.
What they emphasized is our parking standard was quite high compared to a lot of other properties. But really, what they focused on is to try to break, make it easier with connectivity and other things. We have this mentality apparently in town. I think we've all seen it where you park at CVS, run in, and then get your car and drive to the post office. They are right next to each other, and I, for one, park at one or the other and do both. Not every building needs enough parking for that use. They would expect people to move around and.
How you address if the property owner doesn't want people parking there to go.
Shared parking.
Therein lies a concept that they're trying to get shared parking, other things like that. Now, if you go to any communities down by the shore, I mean, you park typically in a commercially designated parking spot, and you walk to all the stores. There's no, there's scant sometimes street parking. But generally speaking, you're expected to do your dining, shopping, walking by foot. So I think it's a culture shift is what it is.
I could also see that being a problem in places like Beeman's. Barely get in and out of there, it's many parks that don't want to CVS and walk over to the post office. That can be a problem for.
They also propose some common parking areas that don't, you know, encourage that central parking, things like.
In case this falls out, a lot of.
We'll see.
When it's shared, it also extends the time that people stay, the duration, that they stay and spend and enjoy the center.
Somebody told me once that if they ever got a tenant in Gumbos again, they wouldn't have enough parking spots legally if they had a restaurant in there.
In where?
It was it was a restaurant that closed years ago, Gumbos. It's near.
It's the corner around the next to the package store, by Han.
Oh, okay.
But we also had the concerns about the pizza place opening up, and it hasn't been an issue. Summertime's not here yet, but we thought that was the overflow parking, and some places are closing, Starbucks, and that place is still operating. So I think you're getting a little bit of movement and flow to there.
And we're asking, hopefully, I'll bring it up again at the next meeting, but of kind of a study of like really looking at what's happening, looking at the facts, so we have something to base it on. Like what time of day are certain things peaking and certain things going down?
Before we go to the next, I had a question too. Is you not not saying I want the commercial aspects going further down, but did your committee look at any enhanced uses in the in the center edge zone? It's always down something, look, some of those. Because you're looking at putting one property in commercial, but then, you know, before I got involved in this, there was some change. There's allowing for bed and breakfasts on there. And maybe some limited additional uses to help some of those properties there. I don't know if you guys have looked at that or not.
Well, again, I was trying to be polite when I said not everybody is in agreement with what the COCE boundaries should be. And it was very one lopsided favoring that side of 189.87. I do believe it should expand, and that would probably be for us to discuss.
I for one appreciate the time that the commission, the committee has taken to think about all this. And I really do encourage thoughtful changes because in this town, unfortunately, we've gone and we've made a lot of great developments with the apartment builders and everything, and it's increased our tax base. And and we're very limited as to where we can find more growth for our tax revenue. And our taxes as the residents here just keep going up.
They do, they do.
And it's getting to a point where it's almost becoming unaffordable for the single-family homes to continually getting 3%, 4% taxes year in, year out. So wise use, mixed-use development is probably a good idea to be focusing on. As much as we all hate to see the change, it's really, I don't know what answer there is.
Necessity, it is.
Yeah, I think when we think about change too, it makes sense in the center because we're really curating and concentrating, and we're being intentional with it.
Right. Thank you for that support because it has been a lot of work. And we are trying to make, as you coined, reasonable, responsible change for the center to have that be the focus and leave the rest of Granby, the rest of Granby as is, so.
Because it can preserve the rest of Granby as well.
That's cool.
So the consultant has also been tasked with coming up with a proposed circulation network. So they've presented a preliminary rendering of what some additional sidewalks and some connections that could be made in the center area. And again, this kind of feeds back into the conversation that we just had about parking. So looking for opportunities where someone could park once and then use these new connections to travel by foot to reach different businesses. So you can see, for instance, a new sidewalk potentially coming in off of Hartford Avenue, back where the Bears Den is, looking at potentially a shared street behind 10 Hartford Avenue. And again, this is all very conceptual, high level. You know, certainly there would be challenges with looking at something like that. And you can see too how the proposed circulation network, how that relates to the proposed expanded town green as well. So looking at some additional green space in the green. So looking at frontier, the frontier building having access to the rear across the Sitco property into 10 Hartford Avenue and kind of regaining some of that lawn area that could be used for public purposes, which I think was a really creative and interesting approach and thought there by the consultant. And again, this is trying to make the area, you know, more walkable and somewhere where someone might want to stop for a moment, grab an ice cream or whatever, hang out there. And then, moving on, the consultant prepared some preliminary conceptual ideas for two properties specifically. One is the corner of Bank Street and Hartford Avenue. So they walked the committee through several options there. So one would be a parking lot. And again, this is the vacant piece, it's just currently long there. Another option would be kind of a linear park on that corner. And then the third option, they're showing some mixed-use development. So at the corner would be a mixed-use building with probably retail on the first floor or office, parking to the north, and then some town hall multifamily options on the northern piece of that property, which is kind of interesting. And they show parking in the front of that building, which would allow some rear yards and separation, you know, between them and the the single families behind them. So again, all very conceptual, high level. This is just to give an idea of what could be there under the proposed changes. And then the other conceptual that they prepared was for the corner of East Granby Road and Bank Street. This is the Bank of America site. So again, looking at a mixed-use building, some nice streetscape in front of it with some additional sidewalk, maybe some outdoor dining, parking to the rear, so it would be an L-shaped building, so the parking would be hidden from view. So again, it's kind of fun to imagine the possibilities and the vision here.
It looks good. I like the proposed parking in that little strip there because if you do, more intent takes away from the discussion we just had five minutes ago about where do people park and want to walk around, they have a nice place there. It's nice.
Speaking of the bank building, is there any update on that? Is it sold?
So the current property, I understand, is contemplating what to do with it.
Okay.
Yeah, no firm plans that I'm aware of. So again, these are just the highlights. There will be a public meeting on May 15th at 7 o'clock over at the Senior Center. And all of the presentations and information to date from the committee is posted on the committee webpage. So certainly, folks are welcome to scroll through and take a look at some of the other work that's been done.
I'll echo Commissioner Shahan for the committee. I've seen some of the recordings, and you guys have had some long meetings and long presentations, and I appreciate your dedication to it because I think, you know, it's difficult to have this discussion. A lot of us wanted to say, hey, I want to move here. And I think someone told me once, want to put the drawbridge up and nothing else can happen. But it's not the world we live in. We have to adapt to times and support our, not only our tax base, but support our center and keep it looking nice and support our historic buildings. I'm sure you guys are discussing that because we want to enhance our historic buildings, not have some of them, you know, change and not not be historic anymore or not be there. So that's doing good work.
Yeah, and I think the more pedestrian friendly it gets, the better it is for the wellness of Granby in general.
All right, thank you. All right, now we go on to some more planning and information. So those who may know that all towns in the state of Connecticut are required to have a plan of conservation and development. It's required by statute, and those plans have to be updated every 10 years. Believe it or not, for some of us that were on the last one, it's been 10 years on it. I can't, it's hard for me to believe that since we started the last one. So it's time for Granby to update our plan of conservation and development. And that process is very thorough. We go through it just a very high level of how it works. I'll have Abby explain her staff memo. Is that the commission can appoint a subcommittee, which we've done in the past. And that subcommittee will go through the entire plan of conservation and development line by line and discuss it, see if there's areas we need to change, not change, add new sections, delete sections, et cetera. And we'll go thoroughly through that. In the past, the commissions had members of this board, of course, other other commissions and boards in town, and some members of the public have participated as well. Then the, once that committee finishes the plan, it comes back to this board as a whole for discussion, additional public hearings, and we will vote on it. And then it goes to the Board of Selectmen for comment before it becomes final back by this board, right? So it's quite a lengthy process, a very thorough process. Some towns hire it out for a consultant. Granby's been fortunate that we actually have volunteers and dedicated staff that work on the plan, which I think is great because the people that live here are the ones that are working on the plan for here. So I look at Paul and thank you for your leadership on the past ones. I know Eric, you sat on it as well, so. Free.
We did three of them.
You're going to go for four?
Abby and I discussed a little bit, and Abby's put together, we have to discuss about, you know, the initial stage are, how do we want this committee to look? Where do we, when do we want to meet, often meet? Put together some of the logistical steps for this. So Abby put together a meeting or a memo on this. This is not final. We are obviously have a discussion on it. Abby gave us a starting point, so maybe you want to walk through the memo a little bit?
Sure. So the first item that I think is obviously very important is the composition of the committee. So I did look at the folks who were represented on the last committee and use that as a starting point to see who would make sense or what entities should be represented on this newest update committee. And something I want to highlight too, so I've identified, obviously, Planning and Zoning, Agricultural Commission, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Conservation Commission, Development Commission, and one or two members of the public because I think those are really the core folks in the core topic areas that are covered in the P O C D. But that's not to say that there won't be certainly ample opportunities for public input as well as specific targeted feedback from other boards and commissions who I think are obviously very important to consult as well. But again, looking at, you know, those six core boards and commissions as and residents as forming the foundation of the P O C D committee, I think makes sense. So depending upon how many folks, the commission thinks appropriate, you're looking at anywhere from eight to 10 members on the P O C D subcommittee. Initial thoughts?
Seems historically accurate.
I looked to those that did it before.
Well, I don't know. The only the only thought I have is each commission would get get a seat. And then it's down to either one or two members of the public. I kind of have a feeling that it might be a better idea to have a few more members of the public out there. I think there's some members of the public out there that care deeply about the direction the town is going in or is thinking about. And to have only one or two seems a little thin to me, but.
That's a good point. I think I just forget how many.
I agree.
Members were on the last one. I have to go back and look.
I think there were 15 or 16 total people.
Because obviously, with the length of it, not everybody shows up to every meeting too. So we have to have some backup.
So in terms of members of the public, what would be a fair way of appointing folks? Randomly?
Interview process.
Like applications?
So that would be handled through who? And what would the criteria be?
How did they do it for when, like, residents apply for town center advisory? Was it application process? And then who reviewed it?
Mark and I.
Okay. So more work for you.
So maybe we could think about that more.
We took everybody. If they volunteered, we took one.
We took them all, I think.
So how many was it?
We were like 12, maybe 14, and then people peter out when they realize they had four.
Yeah, that made a difference.
I agree. For Eric, to make this really meaningful, you've got to make sure that it's really open for public. Otherwise, it looks like the same old people that are homeless and poor is doing the same thing. It was terribly important.
I think it's good, Paul, to get them, and also we've seen more, which is good. There's been more public interest lately. And maybe people are more in tune with social media, things with people are much more active, which is good. At the same time, we can't have, you know, if we had 30 applicants come, we can't have a large board. So I think we want to encourage it. We also might have to come up with some, whether it's a rubric of some questions that anybody wants to apply with answering, you know, why do you want to be on? You know, some basic questions to get them there. Maybe I thought somewhere level of expertise, you know, somebody may be an economist or somebody might be some land use.
Or maybe an architect or something like that, you know?
So is there is another way to approach it rather than have an open-ended number fearing? You know, large committees do get unwieldy above a certain size. If you establish, maybe some, we have some discussion about what the right number is. But then we talk about the public engagement, like we're doing on our committee, workshops, other forms of engagement. There are ways to get the public engaged without making committees unwieldy.
Does you have that in your public?
Yes. And maybe there could even be a list of, I don't want to limit it too much, but like, if we're looking for someone with experience in architecture, you know, we're looking for this, we're looking for this, so that if someone might be like, oh, yeah, that's me.
I would definitely come up with a number that makes sense for the committee. And a set of rules and a rubric and an application process.
But it doesn't hurt to ask and tell them what you're looking for.
Yes.
We're looking for anybody with some with the expertise in this, and you will volunteer.
You publish all that.
Yeah, you publish it, yeah.
I do know if we want to get word out, I mean, one of the ways is obviously the drummer. And. drummer. And we have, we want to, we can't get it out for May, but I forget when the deadline for the June edition is sometime in mid-May.
Yeah.
So we might want to at least advertise that we're putting this together. If we have some, we might want to target to do an announcement to get it out.
Yeah, so maybe at the first meeting in May, then I can give this some more thought and come back with the areas of expertise, and then we could look to put something out in June.
Yeah.
Give that some more thought.
And obviously, there's the town, you know, the communication board, and we put it out on there too.
All right, so we'll give that some more thought and then come back in May to discuss...
The public comment I liked, Meg, I think you came up with it for center study where we had the thing with the docs and got a lot of people participating. I forget how many we got, but it was more than a couple. I was, that might be something.
And that's one of the, yeah, to Eric's point, with some other opportunities for public input, I do think that we can explore some more engaging ways to get feedback. So using that workshop as an example and, you know, thinking about exercises that would work well for the POCD would be one. And then also, you know, looking at surveys, seeing if there's way we can engage folks on social media. So I do think that we can look and be a little bit more creative than perhaps in the past, you know, with newer techniques.
And I'm happy to help if we go in that direction, look at how we might create an inclusive environment that people can pop in and give their input.
So if we can think, you know, think about some ideas in the public, you know, I wouldn't go any larger than the last committee we had. That was a nice size. And Paula's right, we had people that didn't stay with it. And also people travel, I mean, myself included. So I will let you know that I talked to Commissioner Chinney and she volunteered, well, she said she would participate as well as any member of the board that'd like to be on it. We have two to three, but, you know, others want to be on it, so.
How do you select from the boards? Just people volunteer?
Yeah, basically, yeah, see who's interested. At least that's how we've done in the past. So along those lines too, when we start looking for volunteers, I think it's important to have a meeting date actually scheduled. So if it works for folks, especially as we think about having perhaps maybe a large committee, I think it would be helpful. So what I would like to propose and am eager on everyone's feedback is for the duration of the POCD update, so for about the next year, move P and Z to just one meeting a month, and then have the other regular meeting, the standing POCD committee meeting. So that way we know everyone here would be available. We don't have issues with meeting minutes being taken and our Zoom option and recording. So logistically, it would be a lot easier. And that wouldn't include any workshops. So certainly any, you know, special workshops that the committee decides to do, you know, those could be scheduled, you know, whenever there's room availability over at the Senior Center, et cetera, whatever is decided.
And just on that, I talked to Abby a little bit. I mean, the last one we did was at Holton Farm, right? And, but now we have Zoom and recordings and we're kind of restricted on being here. And I think the Senior Center just got Zoom, but the Senior Center has a lot of, so we know that the second and fourth Tuesdays are reserved for P and Z activity. So that's, it was a good idea. And depending how it goes, I mean, sometimes those meetings get long. If we have to add another meeting, we'll discuss that in the subcommittee.
No argument for Greg. I want meeting a month.
I'm doing that.
Okay, so for next steps then, at the first meeting in May, I'll give the resident input or composition some more thought, and the commission can decide, you know, what direction we want to go with that. So looking at potentially and have something out in the drummer for June then, so maybe by the end of June, have the committee, the subcommittee set and established, and then we can kick it off for initial meeting in July, probably break for August, and then come back in September with some public workshops and next steps, I guess.
Sounds good.
The existing plan is on the website, is it?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Could I suggest that the advertisement you run in the drummer have a link, you know, give the link, so then people would know what they're being asked to revise?
Yeah, that's an excellent point.
Any other thoughts, comments, Paula?
I was good.
Like I said, if anybody wants to be on, feel free to bring out your name at one of the meetings. Okay. Next is staff report and correspondence. Anything, Abby?
No.
Anything from the commission? Nope. So we do have an agenda item for the next meeting then?
Yep.
And we can continue discussion on this point too.
Yeah.
For some thoughts to POCD. But if we have nothing else to discuss this evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Don't lose them. Have a motion by Eric and a second by Eric. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We are adjourned.